Six o'clock, I will call the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. We do have a quorum with Mr. Burnett absent. This evening, we have Pastor Michael Hoback of the Withfield First Assembly of God to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you today, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus, to say thank you for this day that you have given and provided. For it's our hearts prayer tonight that your will will be done in this place. I pray that the Holy Spirit be present in God, you would touch each and every board member represented here tonight. Give guidance and wisdom in every decision that's made, in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as always, the first item on the agenda is citizens' time. I'll call you up and you'll have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins.
Now Rodney report for this reporting period shows a moderate level of activity. My camouflage hat that has been missing for several months finally found its way back home. The screw clamps on my tractor's high rock system were loosened again, similar to what they were when I first had the problem several weeks ago. The tractor loader bolts on the rear of the loader had eight bolts loosened and one was screwed out approximately three quarters of an inch. Forty pounds of oil missing from both front tractor tires and the rear tires are missing now as well. It seemed my tractor was a target of opportunity, but today I have more important issues to talk about. The following is strictly my personal opinion and may or may not be true. It appears our government has a major security breach and a lot of intelligence has been placed on social media. Thanks to my neighbor Rodney, I now know a lot about our conceivable cyber technology, as Joe Biden so eloquently put it. Now I can draw some conclusions about what I've learned. The Chinese Bible is a good case in point. We now have the technical ability to see anything in the world. We would know what's in this Bible, how it is put together and its capabilities before it's even launched. We met it live across the United States to find out the one thing we did not know, and that's what the Chinese wanted to target, which is why would you not shoot it down on it? A lunacy war in Ukraine isn't making NBC News anymore. It looks like a stalemate. However, when a high level meeting between Putin and the Chinese leadership takes place and things start to calm down, it could mean we have come to a realization that China tends to support Russia in its war with Ukraine. When you see Putin right around the command in a car and shaking hands with Chinese leadership, online TV, it sends a strong signal to the world. Putin does not do anything unless there's something even for Putin. I am a positive note, I have noticed people becoming harder and more eager to help each other. Speaking of helping each other, I have found Crocus in Radford has saved me a lot of cash. There might just be an altar to Walmart. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Next person we have signed up is Ms. Carolyn Copenhever.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Um, I am Carolyn Copenhever. I live at nine eighty Crockett Road, Crockett, Virginia. And I want to say first thing, Charles Foster is sitting behind me. I taught that young man Sunday School. And I consider him my friend, but I don't know if he is short on personnel, and that's where this problem comes in that we have in Crockett. We have a problem, and I'm hoping you can help us with it. No one else has. I live in Crockett between the four-way and the railroad, um, tracks. People speed through there day and night like it's their own personal racetrack. And I'm talking cars and trucks, logging trucks, milk trucks. I've seen school buses go through that. If With County schools knew they were, there probably would be some drivers getting some reprimands. Uh, I didn't even know we had children in that area right now, maybe next year when a family moves in. Uh, they're so dangerous. People walk along the road checking their mail, walking dogs and visiting their neighbor or his, you know, friends across the road. It's amazing that no one has been killed yet. Becky Grove has had two vehicles land in the creek or maybe more. I know of two. I've lived at this residence for forty-four years and three houses down for five years before that. It's amazing and, you know, and that no human has been killed. Pets have, and you will hear a detailed account of one pet that was run over and left for dead on this road. I've talked to the sheriff's office and frankly, you know, living there forty-four years, we've only seen deputies with radar set up once or twice, and they're not there very long, so if you're gonna do your speed, do it during that time. Okay, I don't know. I don't know much about the staffing problem or how hard it is to get the radar set up, but we did have one of those digital cameras or digital monitors for thirty-five miles to the speed limit. And when it was working, the people going down the road that could see it definitely were slowing down, but you're halfway into Crockett when they saw that. But the computer, the computer misfired and they came out and got it and never brought it back. Never brought it back. Okay, he's timing me up here. Okay, uh, what we're asking is if it's possible to get a deputy to sit in their car for a few hours a week. Maybe we shouldn't have to be afraid to get near the road uh, outside of our homes to visit with neighbors or walk our animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copenhever. The next person we have signed up is Jean and Angela.
Deschler.
Deschler?
Hello, I'm Jean Deschler.
And I'm Angela Deschler.
Uh, live at eight twenty-five Crockett Road. Uh, the speed at which vehicles are going through, there is one that is doing over sixty-five plus when goes past our place. And you can hear them cross the railroad tracks all the way up past, uh, the road and they think they're on a road rally course.
We live with a pond in front of our house. We've already seen many deer hit. We had a dog that was hit and these people just keep right on going. We've reported it to the sheriff's office and we can't get anywhere, but it's dangerous and we're scared.
I don't know how many, you know, Tony that works for R and R Septic System. Uh, he was at my place up at garage and, um, this one guy comes flying through. He says, I would have been killed if, you know, you look, nobody's there and then all of a sudden the car's right there. I mean, they're doing way over the thirty-five speed limit.
And it's all various times. We find sometimes early in the morning, like five in the afternoon, in the evening. It's all different times. We just wanted to add to her story. We don't want to keep anybody longer, but we've had, it's been horrible. Our dog was the worst and they kept right on going. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up for citizens' time, so I'll close citizens' time. The next item on our agenda is we have an academic resolution for the George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team.
Chris Powell? We include the two.
With County Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, the resolution honoring George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team State Championship. Whereas George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team completed an outstanding twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season. And whereas George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team went undefeated in the Mountain Empire District. And whereas at the Virginia High School League Class One Tournament held at Jamestown High School on February the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team emerged victorious, capturing the state championship title for the fourth consecutive year. Now therefore being resolved, the With County Board of Supervisor officially commends the George Worth High School Scholastic Bowl Team comprised of Charlie King, Ivy Lynn, Mason Mayberry, Eden Miller, Kendra Nguyen, Charlotte Phillips, Sam Willner, and their dedicated coach Jonathan Powers for their exemplary season and dedication to excellence for which we all should strive. And being further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-three, signed Brian W. Vault Chair. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Next.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, folks.
And I work with Ms. Collins if I'm not pronouncing any of her names with her phone. So she promised me that y'all would just use and she would have. Parents, if you want to film up the picture, um, with him or tell me if you know who the person is.
She wants you to move back.
Yeah, she wants you centered on the seat. And parents, if any of y'all want to stand up in the middle there to get, take a picture, feel free to come up.
And parents, if y'all want to come up, somebody will take my pictures.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And as always, y'all are free to stay, but I see you ladies are seated.
It's pretty boring.
And before we move on, I think Mr. Hankins has an introduction he wants to make.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, always glad any new staff members to you, particularly when they take work off of my plate. So, uh, we now have our Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, Chuck Arnold, on duty. Uh, he's, he's been on for about seven days now. It feels like he's worked about twenty. So, uh, Chuck, you want to say anything?
No, I'm like, oh, great.
Three minutes, Chuck.
Just a little more. No, I just want to say I'm grateful. Grateful is an understatement. We've got a great candidate. We've got a great group of first responders and I look forward to working with them, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on the agenda, we have the payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a, uh, list of invoices. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. A second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions, discussion or any invoice that any board member would like to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. A second by. Mr. Smith, is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minute is so approved. Next item on our agenda is old business. We have some appointments. Um, Mr. Bear?
You got the Mount Rogers Community Services Board and you had an, uh, an application, I think, that came in that you were possibly interested in that one. Is that it?
I did. Uh, Ms. Michelle, the board, I think I emailed everybody her application, her resume. She's interested in serving on it, so.
So I'm.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Corny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions on that appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Um, also, I did receive a resignation from the Recreation Commission, um, from Mr. Marcus Williams, um, who's no longer interested in serving. Luckily, um, I received interest from Mr. Matthew Heldrich to serve. And Matthew has three young children and he will be involved in youth league for many years to come. And I advised him this might be a lifelong appointment commitment. With that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, appoint Mr. Matthew Heldrich to the Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions on that appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to add, I'm very appreciative of that. Matthew has had a heart with the youth program that's gone through and it's great. And as most of y'all know, his father was appointee and highly involved with this for a number of years. And it's, it, to me, I'm very glad to see Matthew been appointed. Thank y'all.
Me too.
I think it works good because, I mean, he's right there at the lake, so anything goes wrong, he can just run right over and fix it.
Yeah, Matthew's father Kirk was involved in the youth league and the booster club at the retreat for years. Um, I don't know how he's gonna find the time, but he said he could do it.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Uh, did I have a?
You had a motion, a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Anything else under appointments? Anything else under old business?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything? Right, move on to new business. We have a amend and appropriate request from the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Bear, I believe this one's yours.
Yeah, I, um, y'all may remember, you all, y'all did this last month. You did a transfer, amend and appropriate. Uh, the transfer was moving into the general fund and, and Mr. Klein, or Chief Deputy Klein's, uh, letter was to, uh, amend and appropriate the thirty-one oh two four six one two six zero. When the purchase order came in to me, it was under thirty-one oh two one, which is a police activity funded amount. We had moved the money to the general fund. He was trying to purchase them from the police activity fund. I didn't want to short the police activity fund, that money in the process, so I asked him if he wanted to revise the purchase order back to the general fund or if he wanted to transfer the money. So he requested that we vacate the action of the previous meeting and revise to, uh, what we've got here. So I would request that you all authorize the transfer of the seventeen one forty-five to the E summons Council Police Activity Fund and the sixteen thirty-six from the E summons account to the general fund.
So moved. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
And request that you amend and appropriate the same amounts to the respective categories shown there. Thirty-one oh two one four six one two six zero, thirty-one oh two four six one two five zero. And that the motion indicate that, uh, that it voids the previous action on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved. So, all right, have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that action? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I do have one handout here. Uh, this is a memorandum of understanding. Mr. Farthing has reviewed this with Norfolk and Southern. Um, I told y'all previously, they had off, uh, offered two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to us for the, uh, to go towards the ladder track that has been installed out there. Um, they have sent this memorandum of understanding and basically, um, we will construct, which we already have constructed, will be responsible for, uh, indemnify and hold harmless against the, the, the construction side of it. We've done all the grading and everything and they'll provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to us. So it's a pretty simple memorandum of understanding. I would request you all authorize county administrator to execute this MOU.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the county administrator to execute the MOU with Norfolk and Southern.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Next.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that item?
Mr. Bear, this is for the ladder going through Blue Star.
This is the ladder going to the NBR claim, yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
So approved. Anything else under new business?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins? Right, move on to board reports. We have the Budget Committee.
Budget Committee met on April fifth, two thousand twenty-three and recommends the following. Approval of the Blue Star NBR agreement regarding CBG, CDBG funding requirements.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Excuse me, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Exactly what is changing or is there any change?
Basically, uh, as you are aware, we have a platform received two point five million from DHCD for the, uh, lots gap water tank. Uh, one of the requirements of, of, of them is that there is an agreement, uh, between, um, the, the county and Blue Star NBR regarding this fund. David Manley has been working with the company over the last year in getting this agreement finalized. Uh, basically, it's just saying that we will, that the bunny goes towards the construction of a two million gallon water tank and that Blue Star will create a minimum of two hundred full-time jobs at the site. As you know, they're planning a whole lot more. Two hundred is all that was required to leverage the two point five million dollars.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Approval will change order number five for the county office building project.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Transfer one million forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cent from the VOS ARPA funds, our twenty twenty-one funds, account seven hundred dash two six zero six three zero to the general fund, one hundred dash one oh one triple zero.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? What's that for?
This is the drawdown. Remember, we, we receive the ARPA funds and every, uh, about every six months or so, we are doing the drawdown of those funds and putting them in the general fund. So that is all it is, is just, uh, Ms. Williams has to account for that and send that in, that we are doing the drawdown. This is basically, uh, we are using the New River Regional Jail bill as what we are using for our drawdown of these funds.
Is there any more questions or discussion on that one? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amend and appropriate a hundred and ninety thousand seventy-six dollars to the Adrian Park Project. Account nine thousand dash four seven zero two five one. Revenue a hundred and forty thousand seventy-six dollars. Account eleven zero zero three dash three three four zero zero eight. LACTF fifty thousand. Account one one zero zero three dash three one eight two five oh, Withland Foundation Grant, plus the fifty thousand.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that one?
I do, I do have, uh, as far as the Withland Foundation Grant, did they waive all of the restrictions that they had that we asked?
Yes, sir. We, we have an acceptable document and I have signed off on it.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Any other questions? All right, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amend and appropriate a hundred and ten thousand to the rural retreat Lake Pool Project, account nine thousand four seven zero two oh nine. Revenue eleven oh oh three dash three one nine two hundred.
Right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Adopt resolution tw- two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen affirming With County, With County's commitment of local share for projects under agreement within the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, say that we usually adopt one of these about every five years. We have a, uh, project, um, that we are working with VDOT on right now to install, um, crossing guards at the Gator Lane Railroad Crossing, uh, which currently does not have that. Uh, this is funded by Norfolk and Southern, but it has to be a locally administered project and VDOT requires us to adopt such a resolution for that project. But I would request you all's approval of this resolution and, uh, I would be glad to have, uh, crossing guards installed there.
Can you throw the coffee in the port chisel down like that?
I wish I could, but I can't.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Collins, if you'll print a copy of that off, I'll sign it for you. I'll leave tonight. All right, next item is board of supervisors time. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
All right, Mr. Cook?
Had a citizen call wanting to know if we could, uh, provide trash bags, the orange trash bags, uh, for citizens to go out and pick up trash. Um, I've got her name and number. If we can buy, I mean, can we not buy some bags for citizens, maybe come pick up or put them out at the, put them out at the trash collection point?
I will, uh, I'll contact VDOT. They usually can, can help us in providing those bags. Um, we just, um, we've got to work with VDOT as to whether VDOT is going to, um, come by and pick up those bags. Uh, or if they're gonna take them to the transfer station, the, the trash and recycling centers. If they're gonna take them to trash and recycling centers, we're probably best to provide some black bags that we purchase on our own, because typically the trash and recycling centers, the VDOT trash is picked up and VDOT picks all that up. They see the orange bags, they think it's the VDOT trash. But I'll work with, uh, V and M on that as well, but we'll see if we can get some from VDOT. Now, VDOT, always when they give them out orange bags, they will give caution that to be out on the road, you should have signs up and you should have the vest on and everything else for roadway safety. But I will see what we can get from them.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if citizens are willing to go out and pick trash up, we, we need to provide trash bags. I mean, I wouldn't even be opposed to getting some of those little red vests.
Yep.
Yeah, and sorry to take your time up, but I believe I spoke to the same citizen and she said she stays up to date on what, I think she said Pulaski is doing. So they must already be working with VDOT, according to her. Might want to check with them.
So we can get?
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, that's all, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Got a couple things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first thing, Mr. Bear, uh, there's a road sign that's down. It needs to be, uh, replaced. It's Arden, Arden Lane off of Fox Drive. These are private drives off of Reek Reek Road. Uh, just as soon as you go in, it's the first drive.
We've, we've, we've reported that one to, uh, buildings and grounds, so they, they should be doing something on that.
Okay, yeah, if you can.
I'll follow up on that.
Follow up on that because we rode up in there Saturday and it was still down. And then, uh, just want to thank Ms. Williams for the update on the refund.
Okay.
Uh, let us know on that side. Appreciate that and your follow-up on the, the number had been out. Just need to make sure that we're staying on top of those refunds because we're still getting a lot of questions from people.
And Ms. Gwen told me today, um, she has brought in three part-time people to assist um, on helping with those refunds. Uh, I've asked her to check with the comp board to see if we can use any of the vacancy savings to move into part-time money in the process. Um, but uh, told her appreciate that, you know, that process and so.
And I briefly mentioned what we had talked about to one of the landowners on fifty-two. Of course, of the road, so I'll try to meet with him sometime this week, one afternoon.
Let me know if you need me to come down, I'll meet with you, be glad to.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Horni?
Uh, I had a citizen's call, citizen called me about the uh, I don't know if you know much about it, but the Triple B Stone is actually mining, well, they're hauling rock from the big bottom across from my farm.
Okay.
To Spiegel and they were just questioning whether they were, had all their permits and all that stuff and I didn't know if that was something that Johnny or somebody could check into or.
We can, we can refer it and check with D M M E, whatever the correct name of that is now, but uh, we can confirm with them that they, they do have the authorized permits. But that the, none of that falls under our local jurisdiction, but we can, we can certainly follow that, but.
That's what I, that's what I thought and that's what I told him, but I, I thought if, I'd at least bring it up and if there's something we can check to ease his mind, then so be it. And if it's nothing we can do, then it's nothing we can do.
Should be a DME permit and there should be a VDOT uh, entrance permit for the new site where they're hauling. We'll check and see.
Right. I believe that's all I have, sir.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Just wanted to, oh, excuse me, just wanted to say happy dispatchers week and that's all I've got, Mr. Terry.
Thank you.
Yes, I didn't know that.
Um, yeah, I was uh, it's National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Dispatch sounds better.
Yeah, easier to say.
Easier to say.
Easier to spell.
Absolutely.
Either way, we appreciate you.
But uh, Mary Jo, if you'll, if you'll take forth our thanks to our nine one one dispatchers. Uh, anybody that's sat on this board uh, for any time knows that the turnover rate is very high at those positions. It's often forgotten about, overlooked, and it's a highly stressful job. I'm sure Mr. Hankins would agree with me.
And, and sometimes the best way to honor a dispatcher is to become one and we have those opportunities, so. I believe we're doing ten or eleven right now.
And if you're looking up here for a volunteer, you need to go to Knoxville. There's a lot of them out there. Um, two roads on the, the secondary six-year plan email um, that's come up. If you could add it to the list, Johnny Lane, I don't know if it's ever been looked at before. And even though it's right across the line in uh, Ms. Horni's district, Klein Road off of Cedar Springs Road. Do you know off the top of your head, has Klein Road ever been looked at?
I do not know that it has. I do, I do not recall.
I don't remember anybody ever asking about Klein Road.
Yeah. That's um. I know we did a subdivision of some property up there a long time ago and that's sad. I don't remember it ever been one that's been asked, that's looked at. A lot of those short dead ends are often a problem of the vehicle count, but we'll send it to VDOT and see what they say, do they? That's all we do. And if anybody else has any other roads, please send them to me or let me know.
Yeah, still will, right.
No, no, you don't, you, you. You done used your time, Mr. Smith. We only get so much money. I threw my hat at the very first.
I yielded the chairman from up likely.
And I even included the Spiegel District to make the pot a little sweet, sweet. All right, uh, that's all I have. Uh, next item we have is a closed session under two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A five. A prospective business or industry for a project and that is cut off.
Project spare revenue.
Project spare revenue.
Mr. Chairman, can we also add A six, um, negotiation or bargaining where public funds are involved, uh, public safety?
Okay, we'll do uh, two point two thirty-seven eleven A six as well. I'll entertain a motion.
So may.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Terry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session on the record. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors and such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, all public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. Excuse me, by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which a certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting were heard discussed in or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on the certification? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, uh, Mr. Bear, we've talked about uh, some dates for our work session. Did we ever get a?
April nineteenth works the best for everyone, so I would recommend Wednesday, April nineteenth. You all tell me five, five-thirty, six o'clock, what works best for you all?
I'm good at five.
Five. If that's okay.
That's good for everybody else.
All right.
Mr. Hankins, is five good for you? I was being nice. All right, anything else to come before the board, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything? Mr. Farling, do you have anything? Ms. Martha, do you have anything? You're right, you're right. That was my mistake. Pretty sure. All right. Nothing else to come before the board or pick over the chairman, we'll be in recess.